The meeting come to order, please. This is a very good group for a special town meeting in August. It's nice to see you all here. Thank you for coming. And some of you probably had some difficulty dodging electric lines or telephone lines or trees or whatever came down in your yards. So, thank you. I know you made an effort to get here tonight. We have a couple. We have one article to deal with and we might as well get right into it. Let me ask you first, just raise your hands if you will. How many are here at a town meeting for the first time? One, two, three, four? Terrific. You're not going to understand anything we do. But if you perchance find yourself needing information about what are we doing now, you can rise to a point of order and probably not a point of order, but I don't want you to be lost in town meeting. And I hope you will come back. Some people like Charlie Cadillac tell me he's made every town meeting for close to the last 50 years. Actually, he didn't say 50. He said something less than 50. That's a terrific, terrific thing, Charlie. It doesn't come with a paycheck, by the way. Unfortunately. Let's get to the first article. And the first article is going to be moved by selectmen Green. Before we do that, I might as well introduce you to the tables. Mike, if you would introduce the finance committee?
Yeah, good evening. I'm Mike Majors. I'm the chairman of the committee. To my left is Doug Tyndall. To the left of him, to Doug is David Wallinghoff. To the left of David is Jason Cole. And to the left of Jason is Roland.
Thank you. For those of you who say whoever the rest of them, that was a question that I wanted to know myself. But there are nine members of the finance committee generally, and they've done a terrific job. I'd like to introduce Katie Green. She needs no introduction, but if you will introduce the people at this table, Katie, it would be very nice.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To my far right is Town Clerk Eva Skoradick. To her left is Nina Pickering Cook from Town Council's office. To my immediate right is Town Manager Steve Ledoux. As a moderator mentioned, I'm Katie Green, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Vice Chair Peter Berry. To his left is Clerk Janet Adachi. To her left is Franny Osman. And to her left is Ching Sung Cheung.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, let me read the motion to you that puts the article in apply. The motion is Ms. Green moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire the real property as set forth in the article and on such terms and conditions as the selectmen may determine and appropriate and transfer from the stabilization fund $1,850,000 to fund said acquisition and related transaction costs. Do I hear a second, please? It's been moved and seconded. I'll turn the microphone over to Ms. Green, who will explain the article and the motion. Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We've called this special town meeting to deal with one issue: the purchase of the so-called Walker property at the northwest intersection of Route 2 and Route 27. So, the first question is, what is the Walker property? The property consists of five parcels shown here totaling 4.75 acres. The property includes the current location of Kennedy's Landscaping and Gardening Center and three additional vacant residential lots. And here are some pictures of it as it exists today. This picture shows the Kennedy parcel if you're looking north on Route 27. This is the Kennedy parcel looking into the parking lots. And these next three slides show the vacant residential parcels as they appear today. And you can see that they're currently in eyesore at one of the main entrances to our town. So, what is Walker proposing for this property? The plan is for a 20,000-square-foot daycare center operated by Next Generation Child Care Centers. Next Gen is a chain that has 10 other locations in Massachusetts. The picture you see here is a rendering of their facility in Beverly, which is similar in size to the center proposed for Acton. The daycare center would serve up to 262 children. This slide shows the site plan for the proposed use of the property. On the right, I don't think this really works, you'll see the 20,000-square-foot daycare facility with playground areas behind and to the side of the building. There are two curb cuts to enter and exit the parking area, which has 92 parking spaces. At the edge of the parking lot is another 800-square-foot building here. And Walker Realty is proposing to shift the Kennedy Landscaping Center from its current location to the other end of the property and to build a new building and parking area there. So, there's another curb cut for the Kennedy parking lot and additional 15 spaces. So, why was the town opposed to this proposal? The town's major concerns were with the size and potential traffic impacts. As everyone who has driven through this area rush hour knows, traffic is already difficult given the area's proximity to Route 2 and Hayward Road. The town's traffic expert estimated that the daycare center would add 210 vehicle trips to both the morning and evening rush. It would also cause three intersections in the area to operate at a level of service F, which is a greater-than-50-second delay. In the town's opinion, this would exacerbate an already congested traffic situation. The town was also concerned with the overall mass of the building. It is much larger than the surrounding uses and would have a dramatic visual impact on the neighborhood, which is the gateway from our commercial district to the Acton Center Historic District. So, how did we get here tonight? In 2009, Walker proposed the daycare center under a few different plans, but in all cases, the center was approximately 20,000 square feet. Acton Zoning Board of Appeals denied Walker's request for relief from the applicable zoning requirements, which limited both the size and bulk of the proposed building. Walker then sued the town, claiming that the ruling violated Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3, which is an analog to the so-called Dover Amendment. The case then went to trial, and in November of last year, the judge ruled in Walker's favor that the town could not apply our 2,500-square-foot bylaw to this proposal. However, he also suggested that Walker should build a smaller center and pointed to existing Next Generation sites that have smaller buildings. The judge has not entered his final ruling, so there is uncertainty on what his final decision will be, but there is a significant risk that the court will allow Walker to build the center as proposed. In further discussions with the Acton Zoning Board of Appeals, Walker expressed no interest in building a smaller facility. Walker is now, however, offering to sell the property to the town in a settlement of the ongoing case. Tonight's vote seeks Town Meeting's authorization to spend 1.8 million to purchase this property. The Board of Selectmen wanted to make sure Town Meeting supported the purchase before spending additional time and money negotiating the purchase and sale agreement and completing the due diligence necessary to finalize the property purchase and to settle the case. So, that is why we've called a summer town meeting tonight. The next question is how we would pay for this purchase. As many of you may remember, Town Meeting voted in April to create a stabilization fund and to put $2 million in that fund. We are proposing to use 1.8 million of that money to purchase this property. We will then propose to replenish the fund with free cash at our fall town meeting. The reason we are using stabilization funds now is that we have started a new fiscal year, and the state must certify our free cash before we're allowed to use it. That process typically takes place in the early fall, so it wasn't in time for tonight's vote. The more important question is what impact this will have on your taxes. Since Town Meeting already appropriated the $2 million for the stabilization fund, using that money will have zero impact on your taxes. However, Walker Realty does currently pay about $20,000 in property taxes to the town each year, so if we purchase it, we would lose that revenue. Why 1.8 million? All five parcels were recently appraised at $1,225,000. The town agreed, however, to pay Walker 1.8 million for the parcels, as we would not only be getting the property, but also settling the litigation. We felt the property was worth as much as it is in a unique and strategic location for municipal or public interest uses. It's close to Route 2, walkable to Kelly's Corner, the gateway to the Acton Center Historic District, and proximate to other municipal resources. Purchasing this property prevents an undesirable 20,000-square-foot daycare center and its related traffic from going onto this important piece of land. It also puts the future use of the land in the town's control. As a community, we will be able to determine an appropriate use for the land and take into account potential issues with any future development here. But what exactly will the town do with the land if we buy it? The town is committed to having an open and inclusive process to consider the best use for this land. Our short-term goal with the purchase is to acquire unique property in an important location in town. It is also to end the ongoing litigation and to avoid significant risk of a development that the town has determined is not in our best interest and would have a detrimental effect on our community. Our long-term goal is to control future development at this site. Purchasing this land now is the town's one opportunity to control the future of the site. The town and the Board of Selectmen have already heard a number of suggestions for the land, including a civic building, affordable housing, private development, or even open space. If the town goes through with the purchase, we intend to put together a master planning process to seek ideas and opinions from citizens and to carefully consider the best use of the land. As a community, we should decide together what is best for this property. Purchasing land without knowing its exact future use is not new to Acton. We purchased the property on Adams Street in 1967, but didn't actually use it for a wastewater treatment plant until the 1990s. We bought the land now known as NARA in 1976 to use as a landfill. Now, it's one of the gems of our community. We purchased our largest conservation area, the Neshobabook Spring Hill Conservation Land, piece by piece over 30 years. In 1963 and 1979, we purchased a large parcel around what was then the police station and eventually built our public safety facility there in 2004. And in 1980, we bought the parcels at the intersection of Main Street and Great Road to use for a fire station, but they are now Veterans Field. So, as you can see, Acton has a long history of making forward-thinking land purchases. What would voting no on this article mean? If the town rejects this proposal, the legal case will continue, which would incur some additional legal fees. We suspect, however, that the judge will enter a final judgment shortly thereafter. There's a significant risk that the judge's decision will allow Walker Realty to build the proposed 20,000-square-foot daycare center, and it would mean that the one opportunity for the town to control the use and development of this property is lost. What would voting yes do? A yes vote authorizes, but does not obligate, the town to purchase this land. Voting yes means the town and Board of Selectmen would continue finalizing negotiations with Walker Realty and that we would enter into a purchase and sale agreement over the land. The PNS would include full standard due diligence provisions to protect the town from unforeseen issues. Voting yes continues Acton's valued tradition of limited but strategic property purchases, and, most importantly, it puts the future use of this property in the community's hands. The Board of Selectmen believe this is an important property located at an entrance to our town and that we would benefit from determining the best use for the land as a community. Therefore, we have unanimously supported this article and ask for your favor, ask for your vote in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any other comments by the Board of Selectmen? No. How about the Finance Committee, please? Mr. Tyndall.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee, by a vote of seven to two, approves the notion of purchasing this property as described by Ms. Green. If I may, I would also introduce another recommendation, which comes from the Economic Development Committee. I'm a member of that committee as well and its past chairman. The EDC makes four points. First, that the principal reason for purchasing this property is to control our destiny. We've just been through five years of the property being loose on the private property market, and we have the opportunity to avert what could have been a significant disaster for us on Main Street. Two, the property is a valuable commercial tract, not suitable for municipal uses. That's the opinion of the EDC. The EDC feels that the property would make a valuable addition to our tax base as it relieves pressure on the residential base. Acton at the moment has a ratio of 12 to 88 percent in terms of residential, sorry, commercial to residential. This is, this is out of whack, and it's part of the explanation for our having high tax, relatively high taxes in Acton. Taking a chunk of property of four and a half acres at a very prominent location in Acton and moving it from residential to commercial improves our commercial to residential tax base. It's good for us. And finally, the committee emphasizes that because we own it, we decide what's going to happen to it, meaning what the uses are going to be, what the density is going to be, who the developer is going to be, and so on. We don't have to sell it to anybody we don't like. We can be a patient seller and get the deal that we want. And that's the EDC's recommendation. The EDC emphasizes that turning the property over to municipal uses has the potential of taking it off the tax rolls forever. If the property were developed at 12,000 feet at $150 a foot, it, together with the land value, would produce taxes of at least $70,000 a year. That would be lost to us if we absorb it as a municipal use. Furthermore, it's a very prominent commercial location and should fetch a good dollar when the time is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. We're ready for the town and the meeting members to discuss the article, but because this article is complex, and I had a very brief conversation with Nina, who was filling in for Steve Anderson. As most of you know, or many of you know, Steve has been ill, but I think soon he will be back at work, or at least we hope he will. But in the meantime, Nina will be helping us through our legal issues. And I'm going to ask her if she can give us some instruction as to what's fair game to talk about tonight and what isn't fair game because of the nature of the legal case, et cetera, that's involved with purchasing this land. So, Nina, if you would like to give us some guidance, I think we'll save some time, and that would probably be okay. Nina?
Thank you. Sure. I would say that we're here to discuss the potential acquisition of this property, and the discussion should be focused around that issue. There are obviously lots of questions with respect to the litigation, and I can address those, or Ms. Green can address those as they come up. But the conversation is focused on the content of the article, which is the acquisition of the property and the appropriation of funds for that acquisition.
Thank you very much. So, we're ready for comment, questions or what have you. Let me see. We've got four numbers up here: one, two, three, and four. You can go to any microphone you want to if you have a question. Two and, one and two will be for people who are arguing in favor of the article, the pro side of the article. And three and four will be the nay side. So, four and three are the nay side?
Gone the other way around.
Ah, I see you're paying attention. But it really doesn't matter which way we do it, is it? As long as it's two and two. So, I've confused you. One and two is going to be pro or con?
Con.
One and two is going to be con, and three and four will be pro. I try to hold most of my major mistakes for later in the meetings, not right at the beginning, but tonight, we started off with one. I think we can start in at microphone one.
Jim Fenton, Millbury Lane. I'd like to ask for a selectman, how much has been spent in legal fees so far to get where we are now?
With Ms. Green.
Sure. Thank you. Approximately $175,000.
That's, that's it in five years? Or is that last year?
That's in the five years.
That's the total?
Yep.
Do you have another question, sir?
Yes, I do.
Go right ahead.
You were saying that the land, it's not, it's a traffic hazard, a traffic pattern there, so I don't understand how the town's going to change that to make it so it's going to be better.
Ms. Green.
Sure. I don't think we're proposing to change it, but that we were concerned with the traffic impacts of that development in particular. So, our feeling is that if we have ownership of the property, any development that we do there in the future, the town can better consider the traffic implications of that than a developer potentially would and make sure that we're including both mitigation and not putting in buildings that we think would have an egregiously detrimental traffic impact.
Okay.
Okay. The only other thing is...
Excuse me, sir. Generally, we limit people to one question each. I gave you two, and so, because I didn't announce this in the beginning, because most people have been here, I'll give you one more question if you'd like, and then I'll have to take some other people, so we can balance the debate. Take one more.
Does the Finance Committee agree with the amount for legal fees? Is that, I've heard it's a bigger numbers, but...
Anybody from the Finance Committee?
We have no way to audit the accumulated audit, the accumulated legal fees, but we have been told that it's $170,000.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from microphone four? A pro.
Yep, that's me. Martin Gretz in Stone Street. The question I have...
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Just take a half a step back. You have a powerful voice.
Yeah, that's a lot closer than I thought it was. My question has to do with what, how does this affect Kennedy Landscaping? I've done business with them, and I asked about that. They're not at all sure of what their future might be, assuming this goes through. So, is there any assurance that they can stay in business? I think they're a knit asset to the town.
Ms. Green.
Thank you. Kennedy Landscaping, we would allow, under the settlement, to stay there through October, but we are also discussing, would discuss with them, potential leasing options as the town determines what to do with the land going forward. So, right now, Kennedy does not have a long-term lease with Walker, so there's no obligation there, but we would like to work with him to consider lease options to stay while we determine the future use of the land.
I'd like to have more assurance for them, but, all right.
At the back microphone, number, oh, wait, I can take number three.
Ah, light is on. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Malcolm Crongel, Parker Street. This is really a point of information, not pro or con, but I'm wondering how we arrived at the decision to allocate 50% above the assessed valuation for the property. I mean, most people buying property would never think of going 50% above the assessed value. You kind of glossed over that in your presentation, so I'd like to understand it a little better.
Ms. Green.
Thank you. So, the 1.8 million, as I mentioned, is really part of the whole settlement agreement. So, in purchasing, we're agreeing to purchase the land for 1.8 million, and Walker will dismiss the case. So, it's both purchasing the property for our use and getting rid of a legal, an ongoing legal case and putting the property into our hands. So, we felt that it was worth, the whole package was worth that much to us.
So, basically, they had us over the hump?
I'll tell you what. I really now would say, if you have another question, ask me to, if you can ask it, and I'll probably say yes, but I like to work myself into this because, see, I get paid for this, and I want to make sure I'm earning my money, okay?
Certainly.
All right. Do you have another question, sir?
I just, that last thing was really just a comment.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Charlie, who had the microphone, the gentleman right in back of it? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Gary Lawson, Willis Holden Drive. And I wish there was a microphone for undecided, so imagine that I'm about eight feet to the right of this microphone, and I'll ask the question, does the 1.85 million include and anticipate expenses in the decision process once the town acquires the land? So, I can imagine that's going to require some fairly detailed studies about traffic patterns, alternative traffic patterns, what the marginal difference is between the anticipated traffic from this project and anticipated traffic from other projects, not going from, you know, 260 parking spaces to zero. Is that expense factored into this, or are we going to be expecting additional expenses for that decision process down the road?
Ms. Green.
I would say no, that expense is not factored in. The amount we're asking for tonight is the purchase price and the sort of legal fees for finalizing all of that. So, any expenses related to future use would have to be determined at a later time, and I think part of why we don't have that here is that we don't, you know, we haven't decided what the future use would be, and we want that to be, again, an open process. So, until we really know more about what direction that's heading, we don't know what it will cost.
Mr. Cadillac, you've been waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to get something out of the way, when we talked before this meeting about how many years we've been at this, it was you who mentioned how much money you've made over the years, so I just want to point that out. Anyway...
Now, wait a minute. Now, you're going to give me a chance to come back. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to stand here and take it all night, but I'm going to think about that.
It wasn't a question.
Well, I want you to understand that the money that you make for being the moderator is steady. Hasn't changed since 1965.
Well, you keep running for the jobs, right?
I do. I won't tell you why, though.
Okay.
Mr. Peo, now, you have a legitimate question now. Is that true?
No, I don't have a question. I have a con comment.
Fine.
Through all of this presentation. The most important thing, it's 1.8 million is too much money. It's not worth it. A gentleman just earlier asked how we got at it. I think the answer is, that's what Walker Realty was asking, and, you know, it's quite a premium over what it's assessed at. The assessment, which was not mentioned for the five lots, is just over $1,000,000. $1,02,300, that's what the town has been collecting taxes on. The appraisal, which is a couple hundred thousand dollars more, is still very significantly below 1.8 million. Now, in no particular order, one of the slides showed all the properties that the town has previously purchased. I remember most of that. None of those came with a, you know, 40, 50% premium, and there were some pretty good reasons why all of those properties were worth buying as opposed to this one. as opposed to this one. Now, just about all of the arguments that you've heard for purchasing this property, the town gets to control what happens to it, we prevent some undesirable things, so on. That can be said about, just about any property in town. So, you know, developers could come up with proposals to use some existing property in a way that's really undesirable and then sort of make a deal with the town to bite off their hands at a healthy profit. We could be at this forever. That's not what we do. The town is not in the business of buying a land in order to resell it at all. Mr. Tyndall's point as to developing this land, well, the first thing that would have to happen is the zoning would have to change because the zoning on the three lots on the lower side of the slide were residential. The only reason Walker was able to propose what he did is the so-called Dover Amendment. Most of you know what it's all about. If not, I don't have the time allowed to explain it, but basically, building a daycare center under state law overrides local zoning. So the only thing that overrides local zoning is either a daycare center or a church. So if we get the land, we don't get to just build a commercial use for it. Several steps would have to happen. And once again, those arguments could be made about any land in town. As long as we're prepared to buy just about anything anybody offers, it's a bad idea. Finally, comment was made that, you know, there's lawsuits underway and the judge could rule against the town. Yeah, the judge could also rule against Walker Realty. I don't know what the judge is likely to do and there is not a single person in this room tonight who knows what the judge will do. So that argument is just a little bit on the scare side. We don't know. What we do know is the preliminary ruling that the judge issued required that Walker Realty and the town get together and Walker proposed a smaller building, which Walker Realty did not do. So, you know, the judge may not like that. I don't think we should make the decision based on speculation of what might happen. I think we should make the decision on the facts as we have them, which is the property is assessed at $1 million, appraised at $1.2, and the asking price is $1.8. That's a lot of money. Even if we continue with the lawsuit, which will not take long, so there won't be much more legal fees, it's not going to be $500,000. And Walker Realty has legal issues and potential risks as well. Now, you know, if we turn this down, it does not necessarily mean it's the end of the story. Maybe Walker Realty will consider it a good idea to come back with a low price, but $1 million is just plain too much money.
Thank you. I'll recognize Mr. Peterson at the pro microphone. By the way, before you speak, if you would introduce yourself and tell your name and the street you live on would be helpful. And it would also be helpful if we hold our remarks to approximately three minutes if we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
John Peterson, 6 Jackson Drive. I'm thrilled to be here for several reasons. Not only am I joined by my friend, Mr. Mullen, behind me, but by so many people from the town. So it's great to see that so many people came out for this August town meeting. I'm also thrilled to be here because when this whole adventure started five years ago, I could never have imagined that we could be in this position as has been put, to take control of our fate. Anybody who's a student of plot plans noticed that the lots that we're dealing with tonight look like many of our residential lots. They have interesting shapes. When aggregated, they have a much better and more useful shape. So the question about, are we getting good value for our investment? I think the answer is yes, notwithstanding the valuation, because we can use the land strategically. And I think the comments that were made earlier about how our land purchases have developed over time, you know, are very much true here. So while we cannot know tonight where this will go, I have great confidence in the wisdom of the town in ultimately deciding the fate of land. So I hope that you will enthusiastically support this purchase. Thank you.
Gentleman at the front microphone.
Hi, Dave Clough, Evergane Road. Just a question and I'd like to see if you could confirm some numbers. So I believe we have about $2 million in the stabilization fund that you mentioned, about $9 million in certified free cash from last year. When it's certified this year, it'll be down a little from that. And your proposal in the fall will be to take some money, maybe $1.8, $1.7, and put it back into stabilization. If my numbers are right, that'll take the $9 million reserves down to about $7. Is that about right?
Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So you're correct that the stabilization fund is at $2 million. I don't remember what the certified number for free cash last year was, off the top of my head. And, you know, again, as I mentioned, and as you know, we won't have our certified number for this year until sometime a few months from now. But yes, it'll probably be around $9 or $10 million.
Sorry, what will be around $9 or $10 million?
The anticipated certified free cash will be around $9 or $10 million, but I don't know that number because I haven't certified it.
And your proposal is to put this back in, more free cash into the...
Yes, yes. So in the fall, we'll propose, you know, again, the selectmen haven't discussed the exact number, but we'll probably propose to put the $1.8 million back into stabilization.
Thank you.
At the back microphone, number four, there's two of you standing. I don't know which of you was first.
This is Tara Fredericks, I'm from West Acton. First of all, I'd like to say that, for me, the vote is in two sections. There's the buy the land vote and then there's the pay the settlement vote. And I believe that the question of buying the land is not something that's very controversial. I believe that we've crossed the point where we're, we understand the cost of development and growth, that we are buying as much land as we possibly can. So I do not buy the threat that people will buy up land and then hold us hostage. I think that we are going to snap up these properties as fast as we possibly can. So for me, the question is really about the $600 settlement in quotes, and that comes to be about $80 to me. And it's not even $80 to me because it comes out of the stabilization fund. So it's $80 that might be spent on something else. But for me, it's about control again, and it's about strategic value. It's about creating strategic value. There have been a multitude of reports that talk about the kind of development that is near your home, even within a mile from home, can impact the percentage of your property value. A park, for example, within 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet, could add 3% to your property value. A community center, what would be the cost to that in addition? We don't know. Would it add value? I believe it would if it was in this particular location. So for me, the value to my home and the percentages on the value of my home equate to far more than the $80 or even the $220 that I'd pay for the actual property and $200 saved for the whole thing. I believe my return investment's going to be 400, 500% on this property. Thank you. I hope you vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Fredericks. I'll recognize, let's see, the gentleman at the back microphone.
Mr. Moderator, Dennis Sahern, Central Street, West Acton. I just have a question. We talked about this as being a gateway to the historic district, but I'm not clear on what the boundaries are of the historic district.
Ms. Green.
So I don't have a map of that in front of me, but, you know, the historic district starts further down towards, closer to Town Hall. But it, you know, when you're coming off of Route 2 and you're transitioning, or if you were coming down 27 through Kelly's Corner, you're really transitioning from the commercial center of Kelly's Corner into the municipal and historic areas of town. And so in our opinion, this area is really that transition point and gateway into the both historic district and municipal center of town.
All right. Mr. Mullen.
My name is Nadia Francescono and I live on Davis Road. I just want to urge everyone to vote yes on this. And I want to address what Charlie said about it being too expensive. First of all, there is what Ms. Green said about it being part of the settlement. And I also want to emphasize that if this land is not purchased, then the lawsuit goes on and a lot of that extra money will simply go to lawyers. And I'm not sure that that's a very good use of Acton's money either. I think if it's between, a choice between paying lawyers and buying this property, I think we don't want 200 more cars going down Main Street during rush hour. And so I think it's well worth keeping the money from the lawyers and putting it into this property. Thank you.
At microphone one, please.
Hi, Michael Boss, McKinney Drive. What concerns me is we're using a lot of mon... This is a lot of money. And it's not like Town of Acton has money to spread around. There are good uses for nearly $2 million. And the objection, I can't really, it appears to be some additional traffic. There must be very reasonable ways of mitigating that. For example, require the daycare center, which by the way, would be a nice additional facility in the town. Require the owners to have a police officer or something at peak periods to deal with that. In that way, we save $2 million that we have many excellent applications for. If we do buy the land, I'm hearing a lot of concern. For example, there is a commercial business on that which the town might have difficulty, let's call it ending, which Walker might not. So then you've got, whatever it is, two or three little parcels right close to Route 2 where you could put some small houses. So I don't see how the town is going to benefit from that. On the contrary, it strikes me that if we allow them to proceed, we save nearly $2 million, require them to have some traffic mitigation, and we can use that money for many other good causes in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Mullen, Nye Morrison Lane. I've always thought about land use purchases from the perspective of being, of 25 years from now. So if we look at it, it's 2015 and it's 2040 and we're looking back and we say, what decision do we make tonight? And the decision could be that we choose not to buy it and it becomes a daycare center with several issues. And I do agree with Katie, it's the gateway to our historical district. Or it's a piece of land that we can use to introduce ourselves to everybody about the type of community we are. I still have this sort of vision of Acton's Freedom Trail, where we go, come down from the Shover Brook and we go through Morrison Farm up to the center of town, go to the Arboretum, go to the Acton Historical House District, Discovery Museum, Faulkner House, Hosmer House as one line. If you put something like this in here, that's going to change that. And so I ask people tonight to make a decision of no regret. When you look back in 2040 and you say, what decision did I make tonight? I hope we make it as the one that we are going to acquire this property. And I say that because also I have, in my past, made a decision that I have regretted. And there was a circumstance when I was on the Board of Selectmen, and I think it was 1993. And we had a, you know, people talked about money and money was tight. So it came up that we wanted to try to save money and we wanted to save $25,000 and we were going to close the Citizens Library in West Acton. And I voted in favor of that because I wanted, I was, you know, budgeting and we're trying to save money and we needed $25,000. And luckily, this body said, that's not a good idea. And so when you look back, that's a decision that I do regret. And tonight, I'm going to make a decision that I'm not going to regret. I'm going to vote in favor of this. And one final thing, I wonder how much they paid for this land? I wonder how much they paid for the land that is where Town Hall sits? I wonder how much, what does that cost mean now to us? So I strongly thank the Board of Selectmen. I think you've done a very good job on a very difficult circumstance and I'll be voting in favor of the article. Thank you.
I'd call, I'd call on the gentleman standing behind microphone one. You, sir.
Dmitry Shirokov, 30 Minor Avenue. I'm undecided. I just short a line for me this microphone. I actually have a question, it might be pro question. If the daycare will be built and traffic problem will be created, it will be, as my understanding, it will be town's obligation to fix it. How much it will cost town? Thank you.
Ms. Green.
I don't know that I can make an estimate about that. I, you know, I wouldn't know how much it would cost us. And just to clarify some earlier points, I don't believe we can require Walker Realty to put in traffic mitigation, including the police officer as suggested, but I can't make an estimate on how much fixing this would cost us.
Okay, the gentleman at microphone four.
Good evening, Mike Gowing, 93 Harris Street. I was a selectman for the five years that we were in this case with Walker and I can guarantee you that Walker is not an easy man to deal with. So that being said, I'm supporting this because of location, location, location. You don't always get an opportunity. This is part of Acton 2020's view of Kelly's Corner. I disagree with Mr. Tyndall in changing it to commercial real estate. I think that we should leave it as residential and put in low-income housing. I think we could put in probably 25 units of low-income housing, which would be within walking distance to Kelly's Corner and would be a good use of it and would help to develop Kelly's Corner into what we want it to be. So again, I agree with my compadre over here in terms of this is a long view. And I think it's not so much the cost, it's an investment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take the lady at the number three microphone.
I'm Jill Maxwell. I live on Newtown Road. I too am excited to be able to make this investment for the future of Acton. Our town is beautiful and we should do our best to keep it that way. I had a, just to point to someone else who made a comment that the daycare center would be a lovely business to have. When this first came up, my kids were at ITC, which is a lovely, lovely nonprofit daycare center in West Acton. And at the time, they were very upset because they were afraid of losing business, this larger facility. And my kids have grown and aren't there anymore, so I'm not sure if they're still having trouble filling their slots. But there are plenty of daycare centers in Acton already, I think.
Gentleman at microphone four.
Win Hall, 16 Joseph Reed Lane in Acton. I'd like to dovetail... I'd like to dovetail on an earlier suggestion about one of the problems of this particular motion, and I would like to suggest that, for instance, if Walker is willing to do this, accept this proposal, that they in turn should do a basic amount of cleanup in order to render it workable for our situation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ashton.
Mr. Moderator, since I'm a teller this evening, I'd like to get to work, so I move the question.
All right. I think all of you know what that means. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded that we cut off debate and move directly to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, we will go right to a vote. This vote on Article 1 requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So we will take the vote first by voice vote, and if I can't tell if it's two-thirds or not, we will have the tellers count the vote. So this is very simple. All in favor of the motion as originally read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
I declare that the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. I will take a motion to dissolve the town meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, excuse me, did I hear a second? I did hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
You know, that's like going to a golf match and having someone stand up and yell, "You demand," something I despise. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We had a very good crowd.